We'll call the meeting to order. We'll start with pledge leading this one.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Teresa, do the roll call.
Okay, Keel. Monahan.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
And Mindy and Brenna Minter asked on the focus.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? Call a favor.
Five.
Motion to approve minutes from meeting six. One at regular meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call a favor.
Five.
Motion to approve the bills submitted for payment.
So moved.
Wait for Mr. Monahan in a second.
Discussion.
You don't think I've made enough motions, Scott?
What's that?
You don't think I've made enough motions?
I think you have, but just that anybody could look at the bills, it's gonna be you.
Anybody got anything?
You fill in.
Hold on.
Go ahead.
Hold on. Nothing on the bills, I'll go ahead and vote. Nelson.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Monahan.
Yeah.
And I'm a yes. All right, now we're to the public comment section. If anybody wants to comment, this is the time.
I got some, believe it or not. First off, Teresa Craig, are the bathrooms being cleaned right now in the city park?
In the mornings.
In the mornings, okay. It was brought to my attention the Clover reunion coming up on the 4th of July, and they just wanted to make sure that if at all possible, that, you know, that was stated here on that day. Also, kind of unless somebody else here from the church softball league, anybody? We've kind of delegated to do that. Last meeting, we talked about, you know, getting permission for the church softball or any softball entity to get permission to use the softball complex. They are officially asking that. They are playing simply one game due to the COVID. They didn't really have an organized league this year, but they are having a gathering on Sunday that's 6:30 PM. So I know you cannot vote on this, but I wanted to bring it to your attention for the next meeting. Any questions I might be able to answer?
What Sunday?
Well, I know it's getting the cart to head of horse because, and if you're so inclined to let them do that, great, but otherwise, I want to make sure it's an agenda item so they can in the future.
Well, so you want an agenda for the next meeting to foster our Sundays at 6:30 going forward?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Or if you wanted to skip that, do it now, but we can't, so. That's it, that's all I have.
What did we say when the softball association came that if other organizations wanted to, we wanted to?
Wanted to use the city facilities to come forward with the plan for approval, yeah.
So maybe you take that back to them, Scott, we'd like something, you know, if they can, even if they just look, because the softball association said everybody could use theirs if they want.
Yeah.
Just find their, find their plan, make sure it's good with everybody, and maybe have somebody sign off on it, that that's what they're gonna do.
So, so they would have contact with the softball association to make sure that nothing's booked, is that what you're saying?
No, no, just, we want everybody or every organization to come with some sort of a plan.
Right.
For social distancing.
Show up at 6:30 and play a pick 'em league, that's it.
You gotta plagiarize the Hartford softball association's plan and present that to Teresa.
Yeah, that's what we said for the last meeting.
That's what we did in the last meeting?
Basically, you actually have to come with a plan for social distancing, similar to what the softball association did, and they said we could use their plan.
Show up and play softball. Okay, you want it written then?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because that's what they did, and we would like to make sure that we're treating every organization.
Make sure Mr. Terry knows that.
Someone, but they can use theirs because we asked that question that night.
Yeah, yeah, I remember that.
As a guidance.
I remember that much.
All right.
Mike, I can send that to you again, Scott, if you want.
Yeah.
That would be great, please. To my work email address, if you don't mind.
Did you want to talk about your?
Yeah, there's nothing done about it. Did you get something done, or did you just start sweeping under the rug here?
No, has, has anybody been able to?
I have, I have been looking at it, and I haven't talked to Jeremy about it. I plan on talking to Bud's neighbor about it.
The way he talked, I was supposed to fix a problem by elevating my land.
Bud, what, what I said?
I had no idea I'm doing anything like that.
What I, what I said Bud was, if you elevated your land, that would be one solution. I know you don't want to, but that would be a solution.
That stream of water, you think it'd come out of every pan of rain, anyway, and get in my basement? Because it'll just take right off over there, head in the path.
Well, I think there's multiple ways to try to solve your problem.
Oh, I didn't see you come up with anything else.
Well, this isn't my full-time job.
Well, I've talked to Teresa's neighbor last fall about this, and.
I was unaware of it last fall. His council was unaware of it last fall.
Pardon?
His council was unaware of it last fall. You came to the, you came to the meeting two weeks ago.
What you want to call it, come here, Bud?
But you, you were here two weeks ago, and I was at your place, what, a week ago?
Something like that.
So we're making better progress than we did last year.
Are you gonna tell me how you went with your place? Oh, I made both kinds of projects.
I'm just saying we've made more progress than we did last year. And I told you I will talk to your neighbor.
How long since you were gonna go on?
The, the city, the city may not be able to resolve your problem.
Well, the, the state of South Dakota says you're not sharing water on somebody else's land. And it's up to township to see their, their people. So if the city's down to see anybody in the city, gets looked after.
I don't know what South Dakota law says, but I don't think it says that one citizen can't put water on another citizen in the city limits. Because everybody in this city puts water on somebody just because of the way of the land.
Be okay if it wasn't.
I know the way.
Hitting water in my basement.
I, I know the way it used to be, and I know your neighbor changed it. And I know that has created a hardship for you. And I told you, I'll, I'll do what I can for you, Bud.
Having solved your problem, it never will get solved.
It looks like the minute. It might not.
Well, Mark, you gonna try to end the next couple weeks to get over there?
Yeah.
See that, okay. We'll see what we can do.
Thank you.
All right. Visitors, we're gonna start with, what is the name? I don't see very often, Jesse Flomker.
I actually have.
Oh, you want public comment? Oh, yeah, go ahead, come on up. Sorry.
Southening Avenue would like to have a block party.
Oh, I don't know about block parties.
July 11th, which is a Saturday, and we're asking for barricades on our part of the street from 8 until 10 PM.
Have you filled out a?
I have it ready.
Okay.
I didn't know where I needed to, who I needed to.
Got to turn it right in there.
That's an agenda item, that's what you're saying.
Yeah, we'll have to, when is your party?
The 11th of July.
When's our next meeting?
July 7th.
We'll put it on the agenda on July 7th, that's what we'll have to do, because we have to approve those. We can't just approve it tonight for when this is the first time we see it, unfortunately.
We sent the application, it should have been turned back into City Hall, and then we would have put it on the agenda, and then they could have took action on it, but they can't take action on something that's not on the agenda. We give it on the 7th agenda, and that we get done before.
All right. All right, now we'll go to Jesse, unless there's somebody else.
Well, good evening, council. A little different introduction in most communities that I'm visiting, but I wanted to be the same, same privilege that I'm passing on to the other towns that I serve, but I am the new executive director of Makita. I replaced Nick Boshheim in April as executive director of both organizations, and we appreciate your membership in our organization. We're really looking forward to transforming Makita Makita over the next 6 to 9 months, revisiting our association, how it's formed, and finding creative, innovative ways to create a much stronger organization in the future. And so I'm just really thankful for Hartford's membership in the organization for the last, how many years you've been involved. You play an important part in Makita Makita. And any questions for me about Makita Makita, or what's going on with the region, I'd be happy to take them at this time.
What's our membership dues?
You know what, I don't have to look into that, they just, you know, $6,600 or $6,700 anyway.
Based on population?
It's based on population when they redid the formula a few years ago. And then there's, it's different for Makita members versus Makita members, but Makita is all based on population. Which we need to revisit because the census is coming up.
Yeah.
We sure can, they can probably do that. Ten years, exactly.
All right.
Well, great, you know what you can hold of me? I really look forward to working with you and Dave, and I think you have a strong future here, so, thank you. Thanks for your time, I appreciate it.
Thanks, Jesse.
Thanks, Jesse. Leah.
Hey, guys. Haven't seen you for a while, because COVID now. But this Saturday, we'd like to do a car parade, very similar to what the teachers have done. I did have Teresa do a map for you, so hopefully you can see it better than my prints out, because mine essentially look like that. But just looking at kind of driving through town, anybody can be in it, doctors, whatever. We did put a post on Facebook, so hopefully people can get out there. I know Gabby with the chamber has also reached out to her chamber members to ask if anybody wants to recruit, anyone, citizen, businesses, doesn't matter, just to kind of get out and just celebrate Hartford. I know a lot of people having kind of moved up, and I know that we're not having our main event, but maybe it's gonna be still a way that our community can kind of rally together and, you know, celebrate Hartford. We're doing it a little later in the day, just so that maybe we can have a little bit more participation, and also maybe everyone can go to races then afterwards, they sure can. But shortly after that, and I've been having a good year. So just want to make sure you get your blessing on the map first, and then I'll put it on Facebook tomorrow, or tonight or tomorrow, depends on my evening. And that way, everybody can kind of see with the map. I just basically kind of just try to hit the majority of the town, trying not to cross Western, trying not to cross 38, so we don't have to get anybody black in that main road for us.
Maybe I'm here, but I gave you a misstep. I missed the staging areas at the middle school, is there a post staging area?
Pretty much the middle school. That's what kind of looped it all the way around and to come up and around. I was looking at, we started the middle school down second to fighter, Emma, Cloverleaf, Cloverleaf all the way around, and then back over, the park would be like the last area, so people can either, you know, end at the middle school or kind of peel off from there. Just trying to make a really big loop.
No barricades, no nothing, you're just getting together.
That's why we're not crossing Western or 38, so we don't have to worry about stopping traffic or anything. We'll just do a small pro.
No MC, have people do burnouts?
No, not this time. So do I have to watch cameras, so they're saying you're trying to do a burnout for it?
There is no MC.
My colleagues won't permit it, no burnouts.
So as long as you're good, it's all okay with the math, that's for that part of it. And then we're also kind of looking at, on our last meeting, we did mention potentially doing a, somebody had called it a Jembury Express later in the year. Obviously, it's gonna still depend on if we can get a second wave of the saying or not, because the last thing they want to do is jeopardize anybody in Hartford, because that's not on my agenda. But we're looking at potentially Saturday, September 26th, we've been looking at the car show with live entertainment. We're looking at possibly doing some local food vendors, we reach out to anybody in town that we know does food. No other vendors, though, just potential for food, so people have something to eat in the park. We are looking at burnout there to go hand in hand with the car show, and then we'll run to the street dance, it'd be like a one-day thing, like a noon to midnight type of thing, probably us ending along one, so we can kind of clean up and stuff. So like a 12 already event.
Who's the date, sorry?
September 26th.
10 to 10.
10 to 10. We just want your guys' blessing one way or the other, if you guys say no, we understand, and I'll just take it back to the committee, and we'll just plan for next year, and then we'll be in 2021 rolling, and we'll just ramp up there. I'm not sure yet, we'll obviously have to look, and I'll be back here if you guys bless it, I'll be back here listening, kind of what we get. We haven't done a lot of work on it yet, because I don't want to start booking anything if we don't have your guys' blessing. Obviously, we didn't come and get 2020 funds, because I'm not gonna ask for funding if we didn't have the event. I don't think that's fair to the city, and I don't think we need to have it sit in an account that cities could have it, so. Input from you guys, blessing, no blessing?
Yeah, I mean, this thing's so fluid, another 30 days could change this deal one way or another.
It totally could, yeah.
I mean.
Trust me, I've been working at home since March, and I probably won't be back until next March.
I mean, I would say, you know, we'd, we'd like to have 30 days probably beforehand, and you guys would too, so you could get it advertised. So I would say, you know, in another 30 days from now, would probably be a time just to start maybe looking at permanent a little more.
Yes, we'll reach out to make sure some bands and stuff obviously available, because we want to, you know, put that in there as tentative, but definitely hold the reservation that if something changes with this coming into the fall, like I said, we'll pull that right to cancel it. Kind of like we did with the other event, I didn't want to get too close and then just go, guess what, we're not doing it, so. We made this happen early, so.
Yeah, there's tons of stuff getting worked already to 2021, that's crazy.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So, yeah, so you'll probably get to see me throughout the summer, because I'll keep you guys posted as to where we're at on this.
All right. I don't see any, I don't see any issue, but I would say, by all means, probably another 30 days.
We know I'm not back.
Yeah. We should probably touch base just to make sure.
Yeah.
Great.
All right.
Thanks, guys. Nope, that's it.
Good, thanks, Leah.
We're pretty small, that's it.
Be back.
Thanks, guys.
Be back. Matt.
All right. All right, I'd like to start actually by thanking Craig, Teresa, and the council for working with us on our sidewalk project. If you haven't been up there, seen pictures of it, it looks really good. We had games out there, the softball association had games out there this week, and said the majority of people were just gravitating to using the, you know, using the sidewalk, that type of thing, so. It's good to see that, especially as we're, the softball association continues with their kind of season, I guess, as it goes forward. Coming for you today for, I guess, two approvals, the first one would be for us to start with advertising opportunities for the outfield fences. So one of the first things, it would be four by eight banners that are the windproof ones, so that they're not making the, you know, putting stress on the fencing, that type of thing. We're looking to have those basically available for $1,000 a year, or, excuse me, sorry, those are $250 per year. We'd also, we have four remaining spots on the scoreboards that we can have, that we have available for advertising. We'd like to get those filled up, those are the ones that were $1,000 per year, as well as then, we're gonna be setting up a website for the sports complex, and then advertising this on there for $100 a year.
How many four blades can you get on that fence, man?
I'd have to go and do the, do the perimeter, but they basically are at 10-foot length, so, between the poles, so we'd have to figure out how many.
Roughly probably about A between the two fields, if you go down the, you know, down the quarry or outfield.
Uh huh.
With both outfield and then like the infield that's facing the concrete or the sidewalks, where people, obviously you have to stop prior to the dugouts, do the AC regulations, and they get stopped at like third and first base. But with all the traffic, like I outfired out there last weekend, hardly anybody walked on the grass, everybody stopped right to the sidewalks, so.
So we had talked and talked and talked about a plan for advertising, I don't know that we ever got anything finalized, did we?
No, I think, because what, things went into session with the city lawyer and never revisited, but one of the main things that we came out of that would be, you know, we wouldn't put up, if it was Budweiser or something like that, we had talked about not having, you know, alcohol signs out there, but let's say the South Bar wanted to, you know, advertise, then that would be, you know, okay, I think is what we, you know, came down to, so.
Does that affect their insurance in any way, Teresa?
Do you have to do, like you said, the windproof ones?
The insurance is all right with the windproof banners?
Yeah.
Or the way?
Yeah.
They have, they have a 20-pound test tie that they use too, so like if the, you know, those inline jet streams come through, the banner will just break down completely, so I think they'll break. So, I mean, we talked, I talked to the, like down in Canton, that you were down there, same thing, their insurance wasn't affected by using these type of materials, but the idea was with, especially the softball association growing as fast as it is, you know, like this weekend, there's 27 teams playing in that tournament, you know, it'd be a good way to get, you know, a lot of the local businesses especially out front, because there's a lot of teams coming from outside, you know, Brookings, Watertown. Got quite a few teams traveling in, and they can, you know, see that additional exposure for the local.
That actually brings up my next question, so, does it first come, first serve, or, I mean, how's that work with local business compared to out-of-town business?
Well, we would start with the, our decision was to start with the chamber, you know, and go with the chamber businesses and start with the community, give them kind of first dibs, and then wait and see, then move from there, so.
And do that annually?
Yeah. Well, and we would revisit as we go through, we wanted to get started, you know, it's been kind of held off long enough, but at least this first year, we're looking at annually, and then over the winter, depending on how things go, we'll look at other, you know, payment structures, whether they go for a two-year, three-year, that type of thing, and we, you know, reduce the cost with the longer that you're up there, but at least to get started this year and get this rolling.
Who's gonna have the say on design, graphics? Because I could think of more than just advertising for beer, that would be deemed inappropriate for a city park.
Right.
So who, who's, is there gonna be a?
My, my advertising company has a graphic designer on staff.
Hey, Tony?
No, my graphic, my, my advertising company has a graphic designer on staff, so, I mean, they can have proof done within about an hour of receipt.
No, I said, who's going to approve it?
Right, so that can be submitted to, you know, if you guys.
You guys gonna approve it, city hall gonna approve it?
That's what we're asking, I mean, that could be going to you guys. I would hate to be putting, you know, in an influx, let's say we do get 60 banners at one, that's a lot of stuff to be thrown around the administration to constantly prove first, I mean, if there's.
I, I would think that, I would think that Teresa could be the third person to see it, if it's questionable.
I would agree, Mark, I think that.
You know, I, I, there's got, you know, some are just wallpaper, yeah, 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 but I, I don't know whether.
What's coming to your mind, just so, like, what, what do you see deemed as inappropriate for some part?
I don't know, half naked women? That, that'd be.
Yeah, and I think there are plenty of us, I mean, yes, we'll pass it along to Teresa.
But I mean, that's not alcohol.
Right, true, so we can add on, but I think there'd be plenty of us enough that have kids that, when we have our discussions in our meetings, you know, as we go through that, and.
That's, I'm just curious, who's gonna make the, who's thumbs up, thumbs down?
If you want.
Initially, you guys?
Yeah, and then we can pass it on to Teresa on the questionable, you know.
That might be fine, but I just want to make sure somebody's tried to.
I think, I, you got a valid point, I mean, there's obviously, it's a family park, we want to keep it that orientation, I think, you know, once they contact in and they submit their logos, if it's something questionable, even off the bat, my designer can come back and say, hey, this is not family appropriate, you know, I mean, but I see it more being a lot of local businesses.
Are you the only one doing the design?
No, my gra, my graphic designer will help out, so.
So you're getting run through?
They're volunteering our services with us.
So they're all getting run through your business?
Yeah.
Well, if they have their own design, if they have their own design, then there's nothing that they need to.
So they can't buy theirs somewhere else?
They can get a sign made anywhere, basically.
If it's the windproof banners, we, we have, we have the cost of the sign built into the 250.
Oh, I see.
The four by eight banners are about $43.
So the 250 covered the sign?
The 250 includes the sign.
So you're selling.
We prefer to make sure it's the right material, it's got the right break weight, it's got the right number of problems.
I didn't know that, you never said that.
Oh, I thought, yeah, so 250 would include the sign, and it'd be the material that has problems all the way around.
Price of the sign, you guys are gonna take care of putting a bump, taking them down.
Yeah.
We don't have to have Craig and these guys do that.
No, they go up as they kind of come in.
Your company's donating on that?
Yeah.
I don't see any issue. Travis, Scott?
I don't.
We really don't have this on the agenda as an item, so we really can't vote on it, correct, or need to. What they're looking for is just a yea or nay to.
I think it's a bad idea.
Correct.
Yeah, but it, it needs to be rolled down on a piece of paper somewhere, somehow, somewhere.
We've got some documentation.
I guess so, we've got some sample agreements, you should have probably some kind of agreement, probably similar, I'm thinking, to our billboard agreement, than just the.
Yeah.
That, that. Then who's ever advertised the signs with the city?
We can give you some of that, Matt. And when we were discussing this, man, we're going back months now, I don't remember all of the details when we had the discussions, the money gonna funnel back into City Hall through, and then set in you guys' account, is that, was that the plan?
No, I think with the advertising, just going back into our, our account.
Into the sports complex account, is that, boy, I don't remember. I was saying it in that while they were talking.
How's that work, though, from a legal standpoint? That a nonprofit is advertising on city property and putting the advertising dollars back into a nonprofit? That seems problematic to me.
That's why I think we need an agreement.
Yeah, I think it. I don't, it just seems.
I think if we, we could do some sort of a lease agreement or something, that they lease the fence for a buck and.
Because I, I think Tom Larry had a lot of this done, I bet you look back, I think there's notes on this when we met.
Yeah.
We were quite a ways down the road, there may even be agreements already preliminary drafted out. I just don't, yeah, somewhere we have, Matt, you were in on that.
Yeah.
We've discussed this, how we were gonna do it, how it was gonna flow, because that's what we talked about then, how's money gonna flow, how's this gonna work?
Right.
So, so we have that. So I would say from a preliminary standpoint, I think we're okay with this. You guys should probably touch base with Teresa though tomorrow, and let's just make sure that we got all the paperwork, because they want to hang banners, I'm assuming, this weekend, correct?
As soon as we get someone that's willing to jump on it.
As soon as you get somebody that's willing to pay.
They're about a week, they're about a week turnaround.
Okay.
This money's your money for a parking director, or where's the advertising dollars going?
Sorry, what was that?
The money's your money for a parking director?
Mostly being from, you know, three and four. You've gone full circle.
So I'd say let's see if we can get some of that paper rounded up, and.
That's what he's asked.
Yeah, all right.
Great. Then the other thing was just to get approval to have more of a permanent. Great. Then the other thing was just, uh, to get approval to have more of a, uh, permanent, uh, sign out there just with an updated look at our, um, you know, map of what it's gonna look like, that type of thing. And then just thanking current sponsors or people that have sponsored over the years as well. So just to have kind of a, uh, four-by-eight board put up, you know, plywood that's wrapped and, you know, done neatly, that type of thing.
You seem to miss something.
Yep, where do you wanna put that?
Uh, for now, probably it'd be just as people enter by the softball field, so that's the majority of the traffic.
Is that something you guys are gonna put together, or we're gonna need?
No, that would be something that we put together. Be kind of similar to what the, the, already the Swenson Park sign that's out there, but then just more of an, you know, informational board.
Kind of what you've been showing on the J C As.
Yeah, we have the new, we've got the new one for the updated version.
Just so all the people, as they come through, can see, you know.
Just trying to work, get as much awareness to what's really going on out there as much as possible.
So maybe just thank Craig, set a couple of holes and build a frame or?
We, I mean, we talked about, we put two four-by-fours and just real holes behind it, so that they can be interchanged as they, you know, as they order, as it progresses. We're not redoing this all the time, you know, I think that's, I think that's all I think we need.
Yeah, probably a couple of cross fortuners, it doesn't pull in or go in.
But it's up to you to see what central space has got, two hundred yards down the road.
Yep, you all right with that, Greg, can you?
Yep.
We can overlook it.
All right, that sounds good too.
All right.
Anything else, guys?
Neither much.
What's the report on J C As?
Well, we met, uh, Sunday, we had our first meeting, you know, um, after taking a hiatus.
Yeah.
For all this, so it's kind of gonna be, uh, a month, a month, I think we said, we, uh, was it September or August?
We're looking at probably right around the school, we're waiting to kind of see what the school's gonna, you know, with. If school's not back in session as regular schedule, if I watch people, especially right now with softball, nowadays are very busy, I, so. The summer, we just, the more time we can kind of get people to kind of come down on this, when it comes back, uh, I think the jackpot will be a ten thousand, so on that Thursday night, so.
I'm just curious, I know that people max, people max.
Yeah, people max, and we updated it with the paper, put it to postpone, this paper was advertising, it's canceled, and I was getting a ton of phone calls on it.
Yeah.
Um, so we did, papers been updated, it says postpone, they'll be updating, this company paper will say that, you know, we'll be coming back, returning this fall.
All right. There you go.
Thanks.
Thanks, guys. Next up, we have an introduction product, presentation from ISG. Steve Watson and folks are here.
Super. Well, thank you for the opportunity to present this evening. My name is Steve Watson, I'm a development strategist with ISG, and I'm joined today by David Doxette, who's the president of our firm, and Rachel Booth, who leads our water solutions group. Uh, Rachel, I'm actually gonna hand out a few, uh, brochures for you guys to review as I go through my brief presentation. So, somebody's birthday is tomorrow, so.
I already told them that.
Uh, so I get asked often what does ISG stand for, it actually stands for Isaacson and Serpina Group. Uh, those are the two founders who established our firm forty-seven years ago in Mankato, Minnesota. Uh, since that time, we've grown to a three-hundred-person architecture, engineering, planning, and environmental firm. We have ten offices in four states, including Iowa, Minnesota, Wisconsin, and South Dakota. We established our downtown Sioux Falls office over two years ago, we're in the C and A building downtown. We have fourteen FTEs, and that's growing. Um, all of our hires are South Dakota hires, with the exception of Mr. Doxette over here, who was an implant from Northwest Iowa. So we're very proud of the fact that we are local. Our firm supports, uh, twelve different business units, which are listed in those brochures. It was actually two major industrial projects that originally brought us to South Dakota, Terex. Uh, we just completed a major manufacturing facility in Watertown, we did all of the design services on that. And then AgriPier, which is a very large cheese processor in Lake Norton, uh, we would believe designed for on that project. Uh, but we also do a lot of municipal public, uh, works in the multi-state area, including several projects in the region today, which we can expand on another time. Um, before we dive into public works expertise, I do wanna stress, and I think this is important, three ways in which I believe we're different from our competition. So first and foremost, we're a full-service design firm. We're the only firm in South Dakota that has electrical, mechanical, structural, civil, water and wastewater engineering, architecture, and landscape architecture, all under one umbrella. So what does this mean to you as our client? This means you have one point of contact, this means you get responsive service, not having to coordinate with multiple different consultants on a project. And in the end, it saves you time and money. Secondly, we're an invested partner. We're invested in terms of community initiatives, you know, sponsorships, in-kind contributions. But we're also invested in project outcomes, which I think is very important. This means that when we design a housing subdivision for our client, we're there working with you to identify developers and contractors to build them out. The goal is to get new housing in those developments. When we design a sports and recreation facility, we want to design a facility that will appeal to donors, and we want to help you connect with those donors. If we're designing a new, um, water treatment facility, we want to help you identify industrial users, which will help lower the usage costs for the entire community, and enhance economic development at the same time. So, I feel like this makes us less of a consultant to just merely provide a service, and more like a dedicated project partner. Lastly, we practice contextual design and alternative analysis on every project. This means that we look beyond the footprint of the project at hand, to see how it impacts the surrounding development, how it impacts operations and workflow and budgets. And with every project, we evaluate multiple solutions and present those options to project stakeholders like the city council. Rarely, you guys know this, rarely is there one solution to a problem. So we go the extra mile to help our clients understand their options and the why behind our recommendations. And as I've traveled the state, this is something I hear time and again from city councils, is present us with options and tell us why you're recommending what we are. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to David Doxette to talk a little bit more about our public works expertise.
Thanks, Steve. Um, so I'm just gonna go, and it's, it's the second one that you guys see out there, is the public works one. Um, as I do wear the, the president hat, I also get to wear our, uh, public works business unit under that. Um, I've, I've, uh, I've worked in public works my, my entire engineering career. And, uh, our specialty's really been the five-hundred to ten-thousand, uh, population communities. That's where we've worked significantly in Iowa, Minnesota, and established most of our, um, repeat clients where we're the point of engineer. When I was, ran our Storm Lake office, um, before moving to, to South Dakota, um, I, I was the appointed city engineer for right around two dozen communities that, uh, that we served out of our Storm Lake office. It all kind of fell on that five-thousand to, five-hundred to ten-thousand area, so. Uh, we're broken into three sectors in our public works business units. Um, there's the streets and corridors, there's water solutions and planning, it's just how we kind of categorize our, our stuff. You'll see on most of our, even our, our corporate information, you won't see about, we kind of hit on the fact that we have the full service, but we really geared towards the, the market unit, um, the business unit. And that's really because many times you'll have a client that'll say, hey, I, I need an architect, and find out, no, they need a research engineer, but not only here, um, that they don't know, we, we wanna know their, their issue, let's find a solution for them, so we pair the, those solutions. Similarly, that's what we're looking at in public works. Um, streets and corridors, pretty, pretty self-implantatory. Um, we do a lot of D O T work in, in other states, we also do, you know, your rural and urban, uh, signalizations. Um, significant experience in streetscaping, uh, we really think that's a, a key, um, that we really bring to, to communities, and we do it in, in smaller communities, I think that's one thing. Uh, plenty of my communities did think that they would do a downtown master plan, and really changed that to investment field. But they did it, and they really felt the, the benefit afterwards for the business units that are actually down there, so. Um, we do pavement management plans, which is a li, is a little bit different, but we've got all the way, we evaluate all of the roadway network, and we actually prioritize over a thirty-year period what, uh, what we can do with the roadway, uh, roadway money. That's one that's always hyped in, in every community that I've, I've dealt with. I've become the, a community that has, um, all of their, their pavement plans in, in place and, um, and what they really want there. So it's really extending that roadway network life. On the water solution side, we have extensive experience with smaller communities, um, especially on the, the wastewater side. Um, we have, we did the first Sager, Sager, which is submerged, attached growth reactor. Um, that project was in, in Iowa, the first one in Iowa, we did there in Kingsley. We've done a number of, uh, we did the first, and a number of LEMNA, covered area of the moon technologies with previous control of discharge of moon systems. Um, we're actually doing a nitro system in, in Iowa right now as well. Um, so extensive experience in what I call alternative, um, solutions on the wastewater side. Um, on the planning side, uh, we really pride ourselves in our capital improvement plans. Uh, we do five-year capital improvement plans, really identifying, you know, everything from, uh, replacement of maintenance equipment to the roadway projects, um, your large capital projects, we're really putting that in retrospect of what you can afford for your budget, um, over that five-year period. Um, and also I had kind of hit on, uh, downtown master plan experience, um, that's one thing that we've had great experience already in South Dakota, um, working with communities doing that as well, so. It's a little bit of our public works, I know I've included plenty of projects in there, that you can look through and flip through if you have questions. Um, feel free to reach back out, and if you have any questions at this point, I'd give you free, so you have to answer, so appreciate the time.
Transition time as far as helping Craig out, I mean, uh.
Yeah.
Could you kind of explain how, how, I mean, obviously you can just, can't build it and say, okay, Greg, run it. Uh, what, what kind of reinforcement do you have for Craig?
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, one thing that we do have in, in most of, in our locations, um, we do have certified, uh, operators that are on staff for us. Um, we use it a little bit as a, as a, uh, for, for some smaller communities, we use it as a bit of a BD, but it's, it's also to really bridge gaps. We, we noticed, um, extensively that there's quite a few of those operators who are aging out, and they needed replacements. And, and seriously, they didn't have it, and we said, okay, well, this is an interesting model. Can we actually employ them, um, to cover a number of communities, and we did. I think it has also provided a great advantage to our design. We have our operators review our design plans, and if you don't think that makes a difference, it does. Because there will be things that they catch that are, young engineer, you're an idiot, you can't put this out there. You know, with a lot of those kind of moments that you have the learning experience. So we involve them on the, uh, the initial kickoff of every one of our communities, because we know that it provides them both value on their training, but also provides the, the operators and, and the staff on their training as well. So, we're used to that, yep, that's a really good question, though.
We know that.
And so I think that not a lot of people appreciate.
We know that aging out operators get a little.
You, uh, AgriPier at Lake Otis brought it, what, what engineering did your firm do for that plan?
Yeah, structural, mechanical, and electrical, we did not do the, the wastewater design. Um, they had a wastewater, uh, new, you know, increased wastewater treatment for you, and a new discharge, we did not do that on that one.
So you don't have a, you don't have a milk dollar on staff, do you?
I don't think so.
Cause he's a milk dollar, that's why you have to keep him posted on that facility. Now I can, now I can put a face on that facility, so, that's good to know.
Uh, there's, that, that facility, uh, always comes up as one of our, uh, experience of using one of our additional technologies. We used our three-D scanning on the existing facility, and, and they said, you know, this is a ninety-degree square wall, and you know how large the facility is. Um, we scanned it, not, not anything against other engineers, but we checked, uh, double-checked. And it, by the time when we got to the end of the facility, if we would've just treated it as a square, we would've run eighteen inches off on the precast of, of one end of the wall, and some kind of slobbered concrete in between that, so. Uh, that's a really cool facility, though, um, so is the Terex facility, which dwarfs the.
Cool, that's a cool facility?
I, 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 I think big is cool.
It's big.
Yeah. What other questions?
I've never heard the word "cool" in that place.
Yeah.
Rather than saying, say, I'm like, yeah, because I know, I know they're, uh, I know they're very watered. They had, they ran into all kinds of problems up there with their very water.
Yeah, I think they did, I don't know who was the consultant that was on that for them, I think it was a big one, yeah, it was.
Just wanna make sure it wasn't you, cause you have the hot mess.
No.
All right, any other questions, comments?
Well, appreciate it, man, thank you.
Very appreciate you guys coming out and, uh, giving us at least a little airflow.
Yep.
All right.
I got a picture of what can be done, and it only costs about thirty bucks. But then, I put this up here, and he takes it down.
Yeah, so when Mark comes in.
Thirty bucks.
I know, when Mark comes out, we can, we'll have him take a look at that and see, we.
You put that up, I put that up, and he takes it down.
That's on your neighbor's house, though?
Right, that's where you fill in, that's where you fill in, that's where the water goes, going to break, like, aren't you?
All right, we'll see what we can do.
Thirty bucks to put on that plate there.
Sorry, Brian, we gotta keep moving along, sorry. Yeah, yeah, I get it, I'm not trying to. All right, we're gonna move on to ordinances, it looks like we have.
I'd like to motion to approve second reading, Mark, six eighty-seven.
Thank you, Mark.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote Nelson.
Yes.
Monahan.
Yeah.
Keel.
Yes.
And I agree with this. First reading of ordinance six eighty-seven.
Hold it approved. Second. Theresa, is there a verbage in here that deems you as the?
Yep.
The zoning administrator is.
That was a thought.
My zoning title.
And this is the one for somebody who wants to temporarily put their camper, or whatever.
If there's a special circumstance that doesn't address, yeah, cause all our off-street parking right now just addresses permanent off-street parking, doesn't address anything that's temporarily or, or special circumstances.
In your case, it'd be if you were hiding something from the repo man, right?
All right, any other discussion on this?
Would be silly to, you know, obviously they're gonna have the permit, uh, with the, I mean, uh, so it might deter someone from, you know, you know, writing this up. To put the permit also on the camper, said camper himself, I mean, obviously the permit's gonna be on the building, but maybe just so they know, they, meaning the citizen, that this is sanctioned by the city.
Yeah, I mean, we could issue a red card, just like we did for building permits, and that whatever is parked could be out there.
That would have to be displayed.
Right, it'd be displayed.
I like that.
Just doesn't amend any current properties that are grandfathered in?
No. Nope, this will be moving forward.
This is brand new?
This is brand new, going forward, every circumstance would be different, yeah.
All right. Any more discussion? Yep.
People, their campers, if they can, can they put their camper in their backyard and leave their, your own?
Uh, they're not supposed to be able to.
If it's on hard surface.
Hard surface, they can.
Not on the grass.
If it's on a pad, they can't.
Concrete pad.
Yeah.
But if it's on the grass, they cannot.
Then you can say that you're your own.
If it's on a pad.
Okay, just wanted to know about that.
Anything else on this? Not, oh, whoa, Keel.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Monahan.
Yeah.
I'm a yes. First reading of, uh, ordinance six eighty-nine for golf cart.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, and this one's just clear enough, they are adding the riders, right?
Yeah, they, they just address the number of riders you can have on a golf cart, it's either you gotta follow whatever the placard says from the manufacturer, or if there's no placard, or if it's been modified, like a, you know, an extra bench has been put in, then it's one person per bucket seat, or three on a bench seat. an extra bench has been put in, then it's one person per bucket seat or three on a bench seat. So it kind of gives, gives the sheriff's department a number of how many riders can safely be on a golf cart. There's also a couple of small paragraphs adding that, after talking with Phil, we thought we had to clarify, no standing on golf carts while they're in motion, and you can't have somebody on your lap. So say you have a small child or infant, you know, that's just an unsafe situation. So, yeah, it adds those three paragraphs in red. Everything else.
I mean, that's a nice, sums it up nicely. Doesn't really, all of the examples I was presented with as contradictory to changing this ordinance are safe. This provides for a safe situation.
And I think that's the whole goal, is just, you know, get safer situation with golf carts.
And with adding this, this gives the deputy something that he can.
Right.
I mean, because we've all, we've all seen it.
Yeah, and God forbid there's an accident.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Motion to approve. Second.
I think we already had a discussion.
Any more discussion? Not the vote, Monahan.
Yeah.
Keel.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. All right, fire requirement report, Chief Schumacher.
Long time no see.
Yeah, I think you've been talking to us, chief.
Big time. I just had a strange cough and fever this whole time. Fire related.
Fire related, too much smoke.
Yep, that's it. So kind of quick recap, April, a very busy month for us in April, 37 total calls, 18 of them in Hartford. Had no training taking place, because we didn't know with the COVID what was going on, and we canceled a lot of our in-house activities going on. May, a little bit slower month, 18 calls, six of them in Hartford. We resumed our, well, some modified protocol meetings and trainings going on. EMS training on May, we trained on stroke and crew resource management, fire training. We did some ladder truck operator recertifications, and then we had multiple individual skill stations going on. So, starting to get back a little bit to normal, although our call response standard operating guidelines for medical emergencies have been modified greatly over the time period and will continue to be modified in the future. So with that, any questions?
I know the night you were doing the training with the ladder truck, you don't realize how high that baby can get up in the air.
Do you want to come climb it some night with me, Arden?
I might.
Okay.
Offer's out there.
Okay.
I'd have to stop halfway up though at rest, probably.
You guys got the simulator on that? Because you probably need it.
We can carry it up, we'll get you a full set of year in the airtime while we're at it.
There you go.
Just have somebody following you up there with the general. You're halfway there. Boom, boom.
Thanks, Mark.
Another ladder truck to remove the guy.
Yeah, don't get it. Bring in the helicopter to lift me off the track.
Thank you, chief, this looks great.
Good, it's good to have the report in, love that.
That's been in time forever now, appreciate that.
There you go.
One thing that's not on this report, just kind of update, call volume year-to-date, really been on an uptrend. As of today, the department's been dispatched 161 times on the year. We're not even halfway through the year, so, you know, been a very active year.
How's that to the last couple of years, is that considerably or fair?
It's a fair number. Last year we were about 280, 290.
For the year.
For the year. Yeah. But we're, gonna be easily 300 plus if this trend continues.
These numbers don't support it though.
What's that?
Well, I mean, we're looking at 50, 55 total calls here, but I guess that, you know, 18 calls in May sounds down, 37 in April sounds high. That's over one a day.
Yeah.
So, helped refresh my memory, January, February, March, obviously.
They were all.
They're averaging about 25 to 30 calls a month. Went up to 161, this is 50, so you have about 30 calls, okay.
Yep.
Good thing we're taking such good care of you.
You bet, I appreciate it.
I don't trust numbers, and maybe this COVID thing is a perfect example, so.
Yeah.
Show me the facts. It looks like it's trending downward.
May was, June's not the case. We've had multiple three-call days popping in. We've had multiple calls happening at the same time, so.
Yeah.
So it's stretching our group, the types of calls. Been pretty trying, especially certain ones over the last week, which I'm not gonna talk about, but I'm sure you've heard about, so.
Yep.
Been a lot of, we'll say, mental counseling going along with everything else, so.
Thanks, chief.
You bet.
Appreciate it.
All right, thanks, chief.
Thanks for calling us, chief. See you next month.
Yep. All right, city engineer report. Mitch, and I see we are having a guest appearance tonight.
I don't have anything in particular that I want to address in the report, just the young ones in there. I want to pick up a new main street and older project, contract that came and started right off the port of Illinois. So you'll see that project, I can go on around those, and we'll probably work on both projects kind of near the same timeframe. That's kind of the new news that I had for you for tonight. Other than that, we got one action I worked on with our schematic designer, and I did bring John tonight just to visit through the scope of the project and help answer any questions you guys might have. We can walk through the scope that we've written for it. This is, this is an amendment to our current contract. We have a contract in place to help acquire the land and reach the end of that scope of services, so this builds on that same project. We have some standard language. Task two really is, we have a discharge permit that we have to bring into compliance, and we've been working with Craig already to get some of those things in place. We had to request an extension from DNR. I guess for you, because if you don't understand, the DNR issues you a discharge permit on your plant and facility, and you have to meet certain parameters with your discharge to meet that permit. They issued that to you sometime early this year, I believe. And in that permit is a schedule that you guys have to abide by, that you have to meet to bring your system into compliance, okay? One of those conditions is that you have the facilities plan to them by a certain time, and that time is July 1st, sometime July, July 1st. And so we've sent a request in them to get an extension to October 1st for that facilities plan. So part of this scope of work is getting that facilities plan to them to meet that obligation and discharge permit.
That's for the new plan, Mitch?
Yeah.
Early existing, that's for the new plan.
What they're looking for is a plan for you to move forward with the improvements to either your existing facility or build a different facility. Because currently we're discharging, you know, out of compliance occasionally, because we're met its capacity and it's basically its capacity. And so really that's why they're giving you a schedule, is because you're to the point where you've been discharging out of compliance.
I don't know if they get on the radar.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then, you know, just because they give you a schedule, they, you know, they, they understand it costs a lot of money to do these things, so it takes time. Even if we get a schedule like this, as long as we're working with them, I think it'll work with us whenever that is that we build it. Like, or you get to the point where you build a facility, but you need to, you know, kind of work towards that, and that's really what this does. And it also, there's also, and maybe you're gonna get to this.
Yeah, I can hit on the, you know, past three years site exploration survey, that's doing soil warnings on the site. That's the junior, you get started before the corn gets too high out there, and they have a bunch of crop damage in there. We are working with the farmer out there and with Teresa, and also if we do have some issues like that, we can get those mitigated. But it also includes a full site survey of the project, so that's not only the site, but the trunk sewer that goes all the way from the main mist station out to this site. So it includes a full survey of that. Along with that is some schematic design work. We have some agencies that we have to coordinate with on the early end for environmental clearances. That's under task four, so you see some of those agencies listed. We'll be working with those groups. Shippel is another one, that's the state historical preservation office. They'll be contacting, they'll be in that, it's an unregistered site, an undeveloped site, they'll have some input into that site, so they want to get them going on their work there as well and get them notified of the project. Just continuing down past four, you know, we had, we're gonna be evaluating the treatment processes, and maybe that's where you want.
Certainly, yeah, I mean, we're gonna be looking at several different alternative, you know, treatment processes so that, you know, we do the most cost-effective treatment for you. You know, meeting your discharge requirements, what's gonna be required in the concrete, which is gonna be similar to what you have today. But we do need, we do know that there's gonna be other requirements that are coming down the pipe, which are related to nutrient removal. And so it'll be our intent to evaluate and make recommendations towards nutrient removal as well, that's a future need. But one of the things that we did implement in a neighboring community is the nutrient removal immediately. So that is something that we would strongly encourage, so that you don't have to come back in 10 years or so and try to add that system. Because it would be as soon as that, could be as soon as that. So I think, I think we want to make sure we're planning for that, that's one of the things we'll look at. I know a Sager system, we've looked at that in the past, those are not very favorable for nutrient removal. That's, that's one of the things, it's kind of a downfall of the Sager, it's actually a good thing if you didn't have to do that, because they're very low cost and low operation maintenance things. So it'd be a good alternative if you didn't have to worry about nutrient removal. But when we start looking at that, it becomes more costly to do the Sager system. So there's other treatment alternatives that we'll look at, that we'll kind of evaluate as we go through this process in the next few months.
Yeah. For, you know, learning management, basically, we're doing a study in the wastewater, the buildings, you know, I'm pretty familiar with that already. But that'll help us determine what treatment process that we would ultimately recommend to you guys. With that, we'll do some preliminary layouts of the site, just to get a feel for how things might lay out on this, on the land out there. Help, that'll help us get some decent estimates for you too, so we can bring that back here, so we can give you that whole picture. Private utilities and, and some will also be looking at bringing, what's it gonna take to bring communication to the facility? What's it gonna take to bring gas or power to the facility? So those will be things that we want to get our arms around on a preliminary basis to help with that estimating. But we'll be bringing that all together ultimately into a, into a facilities plan that can be presented to the state. And then the last part of that is just task five, assisting with the funding application. Going after those funds, just having that facilities plan as part of that process, they require a facilities plan to be submitted with your application. So our goal is to get you an application that they can then review and, you know, review for funding purposes. That approval process, again, hinges on that October 1st deadline. We have to have facilities plan together and submit to them by October 1st to get on what they call the state water plan, which is basically all the projects in the state that get submitted become part of the state's facilities plan. And then they have funding rounds or funding requests quarterly throughout the year, and that first round is January 1st. And we really want to, our goal through this whole process has been to hit that mark and to submit that first round of funding.
So you gotta wait by October, the first round of funding, then January, 24th?
Yep. Yep, and again, it's quarterly funding, so you could, there's no reason why you couldn't submit in the second quarter, third quarter, fourth quarter for that matter. But the first quarter is when they have the most funds available. So we, you know, we would sure recommend that you try to, try to meet that deadline.
I can't place where this came up in the past, Mitch, but I want to say it was one of the bike trail projects, I think. But this amendment, does this cover the Indian burial ground, the arch, the nature?
Yep.
Salamander, that covers all?
Topeka Shang.
Well, but I mean.
Yes.
Yeah.
You know, it's funny to laugh about until you find that, and you get shut down, and the wheels of the state and the federal turn slow.
Right.
When you're trying to figure out whether that's a rock or.
Yeah, we've learned from experience over the years that that's the first thing that engages you, wanting to get identified. And get those notices out, get those agencies engaged because of these.
That you're not disturbing something that.
And that's part of this. Yeah. That's part of this.
I want to say we ran into that on one of the trails.
One of the trails. I want to remember, this, that's part of the survey portion of this, is identifying what happens on those. Within, within that trunk line and with on the site, which we don't expect much on the site, but in that, where the trunk sewers go and we expect to cross numerous levels there.
Tend, tentative, I could add, tentatively depending on what happened tonight, we've got Geotek lined up for Monday to do soil warnings out there, and we've already talked to, I've talked to Mac, for some reason I'm on his speed dial. So then, speed dial, I get a call from Mac Mullin on a pretty regular basis, because I, and I must be the only guy that called him in the past on his new phone, and so he's calling me all the time live, and we've talked quite a bit, and I told him about this, there may be some crop damage. And, you know, we need to get those soil warnings, we need to make sure it isn't full of sand out there. And it'd be a good thing if sand, you could sell some gravel, but probably not a favorable thing for us to build on our, for our EQ basin. Our EQ basin, we need a clay lining, so, you know, it's important that we know what kind of slows we got out there. And that's what's, we're gonna pull the trigger on Monday, we've already got them tentatively lined up, if you guys go forward with this at this time. If not, and if you're waiting in the corn, you get, you'd probably want to wait then until this fall with the soil warnings. If, if we wouldn't do it now, because it'd be getting pretty tall and pretty destructive from the corn.
Well, this is a bit, I mean, it's a, it's a big deal, I understand you need to get us to move forward. You see, there's four of us sitting here, and it would love to have a little more consensus from the council. And I'd love to have the mayor sitting here rather than me, when we sign off on $192,000. I'm not, I'm afraid to do that, but I'd rather have him sign off on that. Does that make sense? I mean, I, I get it, that you got, you need to get this deal moving forward, but.
Is there any way we could move forward with the soil warnings and table this till our first one?
Yeah.
It's a good idea.
Yeah, can we do that?
Yeah, I don't remember what those, that number was specifically, but we can get you that. We didn't, we do have a price from Geotek to do that, it's Geotek, I think, is who we solicited to do the warnings. We certainly could do that.
What's lined up between now and the first thing in July?
Is that the big thing?
That's definitely, yeah, and if you haven't noticed, I mean, yeah, that's the big thing. And then we would, we would like to at least get the letters sent out to the environmental agencies and stuff, which kind of, but, I mean, if you want to wait, you know, there's no sense in rushing it.
What's the timeframe for getting all this work done, Mitch? If we, if we approve it in July and we turn this in, it's gotta be turned in on October for the funding, January, is that enough time? July, August, September, that's three months, that's 90 days, is that enough time?
Yeah, that's enough time, I mean, this, I mean, this is.
If we lose a month, I mean, if we lose a month, we lose a month. Chances are we'll get the application in, we might not be done with everything, we may have to follow up with some things later in the fall. Which, you know, if we end up having to amend the facility plan before we go into January, we could do that. So what we probably still strive to do is get on the October application. But if we have to change our plan or amend it, is what we call it, we do that, you know, after October, if we didn't quite get done, yeah.
What I don't want to see happen, this money's gonna get spent. Either now, or July, or in November, this money's gonna get spent. It's gonna get spent with somebody, and it's gonna get spent. Because I don't want to miss the October 1st deadline, because I don't want to miss the January 1st deadline. Because I don't want to miss the October first deadline, because I don't want to miss the January first deadline. Because I don't want to be in on the fifth round of funding if eighty percent of the money goes out in January and we're not in that, we're not in that. I, I don't want this thing, when, when I think about how long it's taken us to get to where we are right now, the thought of not progressing just because it's a big number, when this money's gotta get spent anyway.
I would say the opposite. As much time as we've spent on this, I don't know that two weeks is gonna make, uh, make or break this deal. If we can come up with a plan that these guys can do the stuff that they need to do right now. I don't think two weeks is gonna, gonna make that make or break. I would rather have the majority of our council, and that, we have the majority, but I'd rather have our council at a fuller level to have this discussion and make that. I know we're gonna spend the money, but I'm just saying, I would like to have a couple more bodies up here at the table to do that. If I'm wrong, I'm wrong, but I'm just saying that that's my gut feel with this deal. And if we can break out and get the soil, soil mooring done, so be it.
What was the other one done, soil moors?
The environmental agency submits. I'd like to get those going, which are a matter of putting together some preliminary mapping of where the alignments will be and how big of an area we'd be impacting. So, you know, I, I hate to throw a number out at you. I know the geotechnical will be, I, I think that was less than twenty thou- twenty-five thousand, somewhere in there.
But it's gotta, it's gotta be done.
Yeah, yeah. I, I mean, you'll, I mean, whether, um, those soil moors are independent agency, so you can hand that off if you want to hand that to someone else if you wanted to do that. So, I mean, we certainly, we're just soliciting it for you, so, I mean, we could certainly.
Except that we're just, we're just gonna be paying our property. So I'm gonna make a motion that we authorize stock wills to move forward with soil moorings on this project and the environmental submittals.
Second discussion. And we know that that number's in, in this.
Yeah.
In this figure. We're not blind checking it, but.
No, no, no. It'd be, it'd be.
Well, somebody's got to say it. I might as well say it. I'm the one talking about the money.
You know, you know, I, I'd hate to guess, but it'll be less than, uh, it'd be less than fifty grand before the next meeting. How's that? I don't know if that's open.
The moorings, approximately, what number are the moorings?
Oh, there was, uh, I, I don't, I don't know if it was twenty-seven or thirty, because we're coming up to the sewer line too, you know, so it isn't just the site. It's sewer line, it's collect, and we gotta, you know, as part of this preliminary plan or, you know, we call schematic, is setting the grades for that. We gotta set, we kind of need to set a preliminary grade line for that, so we know how much of an impact we're having for our, our wetlands and our, um, endangered species, if you want to call it that. So that's why we go through what we call the preliminary survey. We get the, the alignment established. We get some depths, preliminary depths, not really set in stone, but we get that depth of that trunk sewer established, so we know how wide we have to be with our trench. And so that's really where this preliminary work is pretty important, uh, long-term, that, uh, ultimately, you know, we might settle in on something plus or minus a foot or so from what we estimate now, but, uh, those are some preliminary things that we need very quickly to, to move forward with some of the letters and stuff, so. Um, you know, by, by the next meeting, you know, if we're at that fifty grand mark, you know, we've out yet what we'd spend. And at that point, we can certainly, you know, talk through, you know, if you're questioning our, you know, talent and our talent pool at all. We do have, you know, we've got the four environmental engineers with their masters and stuff. Um, we do have, um, a class four operator on contract now that we've, uh, we're, we're looking to do some of that work. And we've been working with a client to help them operate their treatment facility. So, so we've built, uh, and we've met with you guys, we, we built a six-person team for environmental services. And so it's water wastewater treatment. And that's really what we've been doing over the last five years to try to establish something. All of these communities in this area that we've tried to serve are gonna be needing additional, and so that's what we do, you know. We try to tailor our business for what's coming. And that's really what we're here to do. And, you know, we feel we'll do a good job for you guys. We'll, you know, we'll do everything we can to, to give you the most cost-effective treatment alternative and work closely with the staff if you chose to choose to.
I just remember the Mike Franken trail, you know, it, it took five years to go two blocks. You know, and, and, and part of that was what we're talking about today. And that's why, you know, boring any, you know, craziness, but, uh, I, I sure certainly would sooner rather than later as far as that part of it goes. And that's what we're talking about, just that part.
To, to Mark's point regarding the fin- finances and maybe to, to your point about waiting, you know.
Right.
If we were to approve the moorings and the, getting the documents into, you know, the environmental documents in that are required, you know, those costs don't add on to the hundred ninety-two thousand seven hundred.
Right, that's all part.
Or in there.
It's all included.
Billings to date, my, this, this amendment to the agreement actually would come back slightly modified, I would suspect. Or specifically be inclusive of where cars concluded today, when we have our meeting in July.
Yeah, we hope that, you know, we get paid for that work.
Absolutely.
Oh, they want to get paid.
I'm gonna ask you to authorize us to spend, you know, some money. That's what we're doing. We're asking you to spend some money.
And then we, we, I would simply come back and say in probably agreement for your.
It'd be the same agreement.
Yeah, I mean, the same.
It's the same thing. It's just, we're gonna have jump the gun.
Right.
And, you know.
How would we typically pay this hundred ninety-two?
So as they, you know, they have this agreement number and as they do work on it, they bill us for, you know, however many hours. And it goes against this contract of this hundred ninety-two thousand, so it just keeps coming off that.
Refresh my memory. What, what amount of this one ninety-two do we have in our budget for twenty twenty?
None.
None.
Okay, we, we've based it off the CIP, the CIP that we've laid out for the last five years.
Right.
This, this is actually less than what we've programmed in the CIP. So we have, we did look back at what we've been programming for the last seven years.
And we had much money budgeted to acquire the land and to, to do all that, which we didn't spend on, you know, what we had budgeted for that as well.
Right, okay, okay. Um, so you touched on the, the crop damage. There's gonna be crop damage.
Yes. Whether we do it now or later, the difference is it will look a little less damaging today than it will in a month. Or even two weeks. That stuff's growing four inches a day.
Yeah.
And, you know, we, you know, I, uh, if we don't do it now, we probably should wait, you know, because we're gonna, you're gonna see tracks out there for the rest of the year, you know.
Right.
And, uh, you know, that, it, it wouldn't probably look good.
That, that's the, that's the unknown cost to all of us.
That's not a, that ain't two grand, less than two grand for that crop damage. It's the idea, because it'll be a lot, it'll be eight, say, take an acre, take an acre, a thousand bucks, you know, they got five, six hundred bucks in input costs and then they'll, they'll think they'll make profit, so, which they probably won't this year, but, but they, you know, we'll have to pay for that.
Right.
So it'll be a thousand, two thousand bucks for crop damage is what you should think and, you know, think about. And I've already talked to Mac about it. You're gonna end up with it.
That's the number. I mean, that's the number I'd mind.
It's not a big number. I didn't think. Yeah, I didn't.
Geotek doesn't have a moor machine that looks like a crop sprayer, do they?
We tried to, and we tried to see if they didn't have a little, you know, uh, we got a little argo that we do some surveying with, but I wish they had a grill break on it. You know, because they could go down the tracks then, or the rows, but it's already getting too tall. It's going down higher.
Yeah, it's really growing.
Just this last couple of weeks, so.
All right. So we got a motion, second, to do the boring and the technical or the environmental documents, correct? Any other discussion? Not, we won't. Mark?
Yeah.
Scott?
Yes.
And I'll be a yes.
My motion is tabled. This counts back to the first meeting in July.
Hold on. Nelson?
Yeah.
Keel?
Yes.
Love Ann?
Yeah.
Yes.
And we will certainly, if you'd like us to bring our team that we put on our list here to introduce them to you, we certainly would do that. Um, if you feel that's important, because, you know, Aaron Nolan came to us just a month ago.
He's the guy from the.
He's a horse. I know, he's a horse. He's a, he's a, he's a hundred million dollar project that he can manage multiple at a time. So he's very good from a project management standpoint, but he's also an environmental engineer, and so he's had, he's cut his teeth in water wastewater treatment when he was younger.
I would say.
We could certainly bring our main people if you.
I would say we'll probably do that. So let's make sure we get that in.
Yeah, we'll do that.
Let's plan on that.
For.
Because our, it happens that our meeting falls like on the first, correct?
No, it's not happening. About the July?
Oh shit, I ain't bought the first. We don't. Okay.
You don't have anybody on staff that's designed cheese plant, do you?
We actually could. These guys, you know, it's.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying that's a good thing.
It's a, no, but it's a, you know, it's a process engineer and an environmental engineer, what it is, so. Yeah, we do technically. We're all, all by day more, you know, with these environmental guys.
Sounds to me like the problem there is civil. Sounds to me like the problem there is civil, if you want to have a, 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 a.
Well, thanks guys. Thanks for being patient with us.
Yeah, no, thank you very much.
The one, the one thing he touched on was having a guy on staff that didn't know how to run that stuff. And I promise you, nobody on that job had ever unloaded anything in a plane. Not one time.
I can tell you that John's probably never gotten a boat and pulled the floats out here, but maybe you have.
I don't know that I've been in it, but I've been, uh, very involved with, uh, some of the bad stuff out here. I, I, especially early on, I was made well aware of the issues that we had.
All right, so we got it. Thanks, Johnny.
Great, great.
All right, we're gonna keep rocking. Craig?
I have no updates on my report. Do you have any to me?
Did I read, you got the trucks back yet?
Nope, we're still working. I just actually got my license so I can go across the border last Thursday.
You just got your license to cross the border.
So when we.
Got some kind of parole car or?
So our CDLs, when we got them, I mean, I've had mine before there was ever a CDL. I got grandfathered in. That's a long event, mine. But since we don't have medical cards or exempt from medical cards, they want, at that time, they said you had to be clinical for a support. And within fifty miles. Well, I talked to a peer here a couple of weeks ago and I'm about this, we went through some stuff and we actually can go across. We just have to have that restriction taken off. And we still don't have to have a medical card because we're governments who exempt, so. I got mine. Neil, when he did his, they marked the wrong box, so his is actually good to go across the border. So there's two of us that can go here right across, so we're gonna just go drive the box.
If it makes you feel better, I have two letters that says you cannot be shut down at any border crossing.
Do you want to?
If we just photocopy those off, change some information out there, if you can just wave that out.
We're good now.
Milk, right, gravel.
We actually got the license plates are in, so when we get up there, we're just gonna plate them and.
Off you go. Sure. I sure hope, I sure hope for your sake they're getting them to make it back.
We're very chained.
That's a, that's a three-man road trip.
That's gonna be three.
You all gonna wear masks.
We've been around each other every day.
I saw this today, that there was a city employee and a, they had got another city employee and one had a mask and one didn't. So I was just curious if that was policy or?
Um, that was probably our board and he's. That's all I'm gonna say.
Or so, so.
Yep, so.
Came on the Meg water go around? Have they got covered?
Yep, we got it all done, everything.
All over the asphalt roads, can't you tell?
Yeah, we actually were about a little over a thousand dollars in us in what we were planning for the first.
I said, yeah, that's all over the asphalt roads.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
A little steepage there, wasn't there? Tracks pretty good.
Anything else for Craig?
Uh, just an observation of, uh, actually, Tyson and Mitch has reported that we were looking for, uh.
Pins?
Pins, and they mostly came and surveyed.
Yeah, they should have been here.
Yeah, it was refreshed today, so property pins are there.
Good.
We weren't looking in the right locations.
Did you gain?
We were off, we were off even from my memory.
After you gained this property.
I remember finding that one time and I couldn't remember this.
I had asked Tracy, Craig, this really doesn't affect you, about, uh, Melkison Road on the south side on Stumpy's land, not, not being mowed. And we didn't annex that in, and there's nothing in our agreement. And it was never mowed before when it was gravel, when it was just, I don't think it was asphalt mowed. So Tracy said the only way we can get that mowed, we'd have to file a complaint to the county to see if we can have them mow that.
County jurisdiction, so it's.
Yeah, I don't know, but it's really too bad, but.
If it's not done by fall, we'll take a sip more, knock it down just for drifting purposes.
Yeah.
So we don't have.
Yeah.
Drifting up there.
I mean, up until the last probably two weeks, it, you couldn't even know, you know, because the grass was just, now it's noticeable. It wasn't before, just the last couple of weeks now you can tell. So I've had a couple of people ask, that's the only reason that I.
And we did get one more light work, I guess. So Theresa said she seen down the other night. Um, Sue Valley came out and they set the sedges down and the lights. So the other one, there's, we put shrouds in to try to block them up inside, so I'm gonna pull that one apart. I think the shrouds actually blocking the sunlight along with the munt building means it's all right there, so misses, only catches a half an hour maybe of sunlight, Dave. So we're gonna take that out and try and see if that one, or we'll start to work too, so we might have lights all working, so we'll find out.
Oh, that'd be awesome.
We got nine more work.
We should have got a white tower plates.
Yes, we should.
Balls would have been blown up.
That baby's beating coloan right now.
We got a tournament going up this weekend at the sports complex. It is supposed to report by the time we were, Matt touched on. So they requested, have we got, when we jumped the hurdle, where they have people that have signed.
Everything's, everything's in place.
They've signed everything with us. They signed the facilities agreement, the COVID identi- identification agreement. Um, they paid their fees for the, um, you know, rental facility there, because we've enacted them, you know, back to maintenance here, so. Yeah, I've got all the paperwork ready. Um, they're gonna have to on their end, get the paperwork from each player to, for the sign off.
The maintainer, the, the machine, the drag fields and stuff, they got.
That is out there. We've been holding, we just brought it out to the suite, hold the key on it, and then we'll leave the four-wheeler in town, so they can drag their two fields in town. So I've been working with, uh, I've been talking here just one every day, just making sure about any problems.
Yep. Because they got twenty?
Twenty-some teams, yeah. There's three of them from Minneapolis coming.
Yeah. Because I don't suppose they can find any place to play?
So it's pretty, so it's gonna be a big tournament, so I've been.
Not a field for a group.
Yeah, cool, that's true.
So, yeah, no, we've been, we've been working pretty much this whole week just trying to get the, we're not gonna seed it until after the tournament, you know, because we know what's gonna happen otherwise we do. So, but it is, the black dirt's all been knocked down, landscaping's been done as much as we can. Um, we're just about done hauling the dirt for that building and getting that knocked down and cleaned up. So we're gonna try to, by the end of the week, we want to have everything as nice as it can be with black dirt and clay, you know, which is.
Is that a three-day tournament?
Two, I think.
Um, I think they might have some game, pool games or whatever on Friday night, just for the positioning. They call it pool games?
Pooling, okay.
Yep, so they know. They got them on Friday, and then I think some on Saturday morning, and then they start the actual tournament.
I saw them, another question, Craig. So is the elevator where they're parking, is that right at the edge of our property line or are they on us?
They are on ours. I know I went and talked to them about when we did the market, and they did actually move, once we put the barricades out there, they moved all their vehicles out of there.
Yeah.
But I believe they are parked like on the very south end of our.
That's what I was curious.
I think the telephone pools, like the.
Is that the line?
I believe so.
Okay.
Round's kinda diagonally.
Yeah.
Know these from there?
Yeah.
Unless it's a hot sheet, lot of that.
Yes. Okay. All right. Anything else for Craig? All right. Thank you, Craig. All right, thank you, Craig, Karen?
Yeah, I just have a couple of election items, so our election is next Tuesday and the board of workers I had for the first scheduled election all opted not to work because of the pandemic, older gals. So I found a new board consisting of Georgia Barrett, Rosie Quinn, and Darla Lawber. So I would like a motion to approve and appoint them as our new election board.
Motion approved.
Second, any discussion? If not?
Well, do they have to be appointed by pardon and then we vote on me, or does it matter, can you just make the motion?
I think the last time we did it, we just made the motion too.
I don't, is there background checks or anything that these folk need to be?
No, we're, we're lucky to find.
We have to ask him to count.
You know, sir, here we go.
Anything else?
I probably said too much.
Yeah, you got it. All right, well, Monahan?
Yeah.
Keel?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yeah.
And I'll be a yes.
And then one other thing with the election, um, state law states that you have to have the official canvas within seven days of the election. So normally, in a normal situation, we always have the election the second Tuesday and then we have our meeting the third Tuesday. Well, because of this, planning and zoning meeting is next week on Tuesday. So we're wondering if the board could meet at six thirty before the planning and zoning meeting in a special council meeting to do the official canvas. Does that work?
So it'd be the thirtieth?
The thirtieth.
So that's, that would get us under our timeframe, it'd just be the canvas of votes, so basically.
Is there anything going on Monday?
Hmm.
Two, Tuesday would be Hail Mary, I mean, if we planned it for Monday and that didn't work, we could still do it Tuesday.
Yeah, if it worked. We just need to get a majority so we can.
Yeah, just wondering what day works for you guys, so.
I don't, I don't have anything going on twenty second or twenty third.
Twenty-nine, no, it's twenty.
It'd be twenty ninth or thirtieth.
Oh, yeah, I still don't have anything going on. Weird.
I can do either one.
Either one?
Scott?
Do I have to abstain? Twenty-nine would work better for me.
You're, you're not on the ballot, so you're gonna.
Yeah, so you can be here, you're not on the ballot.
I realize that, yeah, speeding.
I know you are.
Okay, let's be an Arden Jones.
Wow.
All right, so yeah, whatever day it's fine.
I'd say if we can, I'd be all right with Monday, would you?
Yeah, yeah.
Let's try to go on Monday.
Monday, okay.
Twenty-ninth, seven o'clock.
At seven, okay.
Okay. And you'll send out something on that, I'm assuming somebody will.
We'll have to do agenda, that's all.
For call, for text.
Yeah, we've been getting those.
I'm special, Alan.
Okay, then the only other thing in my calendar of events, I was informed H A D F meetings have moved from Friday mornings at seven thirty to Wednesday mornings at seven thirty.
Yep.
So they're wrong in my calendar.
Yeah, that just happened on Friday, um, just with, uh, summer, people's summer schedules. I didn't say Friday's gonna work for a long time, but they finally believed me. Didn't seem very fair to Gabe, you know, like if we've got an R F I or R F P that we have to put together, H A D F doesn't hear about it until the morning, you know. And my second point was, if they don't meet on Wednesday morning, we're just coming out of a council meeting. It's really fresh in everyone's mind.
Right.
Our information shouldn't, you know, get too watered down, so it was unanimous, I think, wasn't it?
Yeah.
All opposed was pretty quiet.
Yeah, there was no opposed.
Yeah.
So you can, you'll refresh that before the next meeting, I'm assuming, right?
Your calendar? Yeah, by my next report, it'll be accurate.
I'm not, I don't doubt that at all.
And that's all I have.
All right, any questions for Karen?
Obviously, we paid for the hydro seating on Van Mark, that went all the way down tonight.
Yeah, we just, Adam, appreciate it.
Yeah, I was gonna.
And I think they were gonna probably touch up some warriors that didn't get.
It's, it's still.
And just so, just so you know, we had, we had overseeing in the bid with the contractor for about five thousand dollars that didn't get used on the project, so we basically, you know, used a part, portion of that, fifteen hundred dollars of that.
Excellent, excellent, okay.
And I talked to, or I talked to Mitch about it and Dexter sent me a text, Kevin worked all set, but they were gonna come over last weekend and look at it, cause it, it wasn't a very good scene, so.
Yeah, I, we're working on that.
So when I came in on Saturday and seen it, I called Mitch right away on Monday.
Those guys are probably working on their twelfth or fourteenth hour for the day. I think the hurry up and get it done.
That's what I looked like.
Was the order.
That's what I thought on Saturday when I seen it, so.
They came out there late Friday night, yeah, I was, I was surprised to see them.
Yeah, we're still working through that.
Do it right, do it thrice.
Yeah.
All right, uh, Theresa?
Um, my report, I just wanna touch on, basically, point out to you is on the grant updates, so the E V A grant, the Economic Development Assistant Grant that we are trying for, for the sewer line going up western, um, Leslie at Secog, you've been working with Mitch and we're getting that application put together and it should be submitted by, I think they're gonna have us review it July fifteenth, so that's coming all together, that grant for submission. Um, and then, if you remember back, um, when we did our budget last year, the bike and rent committee came and said that we want to try for a transportation alternative grant this year to do, um, basically phase six, which would go from fighter along the creek to Maine. And so that submission deadline, we have to have a letter of intent by July first here and, um, that doesn't need any council action, it's just basically notifying that we're going to be applying for this. Um, so we'll get that letter of intent off by July first and then the actual application is due October first, so we'll be, that will be coming before you guys to get that grant into, and so we'll try to get that going. And then, um, when I put in my report, um, we received a Wellmark grant, we didn't have to do anything at all, which is even better, so, um, I had a couple of people contact me from Wellmark, they have this program that basically, um, they work with the Division One schools out there and it was U S D they were working with in South Dakota that, um, basically for free throws or, um, field gold, um, people in the crowd can nominate their hometown to get grant, to get some funding and we must have a lot of U S D fans, I guess, I don't know, so we got, um, a grant from them for twelve thousand five hundred twenty dollars.
Well, this should officially put the S T S U fans on notice.
I know, yeah. The U S D funds, they said it was, yeah, from, from their grant, so, um, what they fund type of programs are kinda, um, so they're geared towards healthy living, so they said most often, um, the funding, you know, got pools, bike trails, parks, things like that for active living, so, um, for twelve thousand dollars, I talked through, um, their people a little bit, um, we really can't find a pool with that or another bike trail, it's just not quite enough money there, um, talked to Craig a little bit. We, our playground equipment, um, turtle creeks, pretty sad shade, and then if you remember, we also though got that playground equipment, we bought, um, Zacharias had, you know, from Sioux Falls that he was tearing, we got that, we still haven't done anything with that, so I talked to them about new playground equipment, um, a playground system, like a big system we have in the park, that's pretty spending, that was like forty thousand, that, so. When I brought up the playground equipment that we have sitting around, um, from Sioux Falls, they love that ideal, they love the ideal of refurbishing playground equipment, they would pay to, um, you know, so our guys wouldn't have to do any work, they would, um, you know, sandbl- they'd pay to sandblast it, to paint it, to set it, the, the chips, the border, um, all that could fall under this, you know, whatever we can get for the twelve thousand, so. If it's good with the council, you know, I said I talked with you guys tonight, if it's, cause this is a council, we will, uh, move forward, uh, and we kinda told Craig to kinda put together maybe quotes on that to make sure we can, what we can all do for this money and that, but that's not like a good idea to use these funds on.
Put a coyote logo in there someplace, just to bring warmth to you.
Yeah.
Well, Theresa mentioned this to me, I thought this was a great idea, man, and she said they just love that.
There, there was a marketing person on with them, they said, oh, repurpose it, we haven't done a grant like that, that would be great.
Yeah, cause they're looking at it from a publicity.
Yeah, they're gonna public, the public side.
That is perfect, so.
Did they, did they need signage like, uh, Mid America Energy, did they mention it?
They did not mention any signage like that, I suppose we'd put.
We'd probably give them a sign.
We probably, yeah.
Do a little sign in there, I'm sorry, for forty bucks.
Yeah, so.
John's American.
So going with that though, I mean, when we first talked about this playground, we had thought to put that out the sports complex to get more stuff out there, is that still our goal or do we want this internal creek and look for new stuff, I, I mean, I just wanna make sure that we are looking at the right spot to place this.
We're, it was gonna, do what Swanson again?
Yeah, that's what we kinda originally planned on it, to get something out there.
I would think from what more time use, it's gonna be better used at Turtle Creek than it would be out there. I mean, I don't have a problem that at some point we put something out there, but right now, that Turtle Creek Park is getting, I tell you what, that gets used.
Yeah, so that's just saying, where, where do we want a Turtle Creek, cause.
It'd almost be nice to do a sports theme on the sports complex.
Yeah, yes, yeah.
So you're taking up a lot of space?
No, it's not, it's, it's all right now with the sewer plant.
Oh, it is, okay, okay, so yeah, getting it in, in, in use would be.
Great, that'd be awesome, I think that's, I would say let's do it in Turtle Creek.
I say, I say we put it in Turtle Creek.
I do.
Okay, so does that make sense?
And I, I don't know, Craig, but in my mind, I'm thinking, I wonder if it just goes together and then we can all sandblast it together.
Yeah, I'll talk to a few people that do sandblasting.
Cause they can do that, they can do that water blasting now without any dust and.
Yeah, I'll do some checking in here to see who's, what we can get done and what's.
Just seems like it'd be easier to sandblast and paint when it's already erected.
Yeah, get it set, set up.
There probably ain't anybody around that knows how it goes back together.
Craig?
We got, we got instructions.
I've tore, tore things apart before.
Who's got instructions, Craig or you?
We got, I, I got them.
You got them?
Yep.
Okay.
When, when.
What do you mean by that?
When Zacharias.
I know exactly what I mean by that. You'd have to start looking for those instructions tonight.
When Zacharias took it down, he, he wrote everything out and he got it for us.
Footprint it out, so you don't look for footprints at where it starts.
Did, I can't, Zacharias, did he donate that? Did we pay him, we paid him, yeah.
He gave it to the side.
Never mind.
It was all done one of his guys, or so we knew.
I think more signs. Yeah. It's fine. I would.
Yeah, that's a novel idea, I think.
Okay.
Yeah, all right, anything else?
No, there's no question.
All right, any questions for Theresa? Old business, we need to review proposed changes to the employee manual. Theresa, you've added them here, I see.
Yeah, so everything has stayed the same except we've, you know, I think our, we've always had the discussion about what to do, um, with salary personnel as far as our wording, um, vacation and sick leave, so. I did sit down with, uh, Karen and Gabe, um, before, you know, this council meeting and, um, Gabe's been at a couple of salary positions, I kinda thought what made most sense to him. Um, he said that, um, and, and it makes sense to, to us as well, you know, basically when you hire a person, you're looking to get forty hours for a work week out of them, so he says, you know, the, what Brandon did, basing it off the forty hour work week seemed to make sense to him, it makes sense to us as well, you know, you get forty hours, if they get their forty hours in a salary in three days and they wanna take the next two off, so be it, or if, uh, you know, they only get thirty-eight hours in, then that is the time where they would have to draw from either vacation or sick, depending on why they were gone, so we kinda just base it, instead of per day and the hours of the day, it'd be by the week we would look at, you know, with it.
I'll make a motion to approve the policy or the manual change.
Second.
Let's let Crawford get back in here so we can vote.
Yeah, you're gonna need a vote.
Any other discussion between you two guys? We're waiting.
Yes.
You got any discussion? Okay, if not, we'll vote, Keel?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yeah.
Nelson?
Yes.
And I'll be a yes, Karen.
Another way to make more employees appreciate the employee manual updates for salaried employees is to have more salaried employees.
Yeah.
That's true.
All right, anything else? Uh, new business, we need to transfer land to H A D F for track one, I'll heighten its addition.
Some move.
Second.
Discussion.
Just transfer land, no, no money exchange, it's just a retitle it basically, correct?
Basically, it's so we get the land in the development foundation's name, so they can do the exchange.
They can exercise it.
Is A D F, is up to speed on this?
Yes. I'm actually at the warranty duty here, so there you go.
But Jeremy's been here.
I know, he's coming tomorrow.
All right.
Put the city seal on there too.
Any more discussion, not a vote, Nelson?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yep.
I'll be a yes. Correspondents? I believe we need to go into executive session, can I have an option for that, or?
Legal.
Legal, sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we will move into the executive session.
Is it related to?